Is the micro-- yeah, the microphone is on. Don't have to ask on this one. This is the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting for Wednesday, April 13th, 2022. It is 3:35 PM. I hereby call the meeting to order. Our first item is CAC 2022-00002. Do you all want to read the case? Or do you feel like you've read it enough?
Well, it's up to you. I'd be happy to read it if you'd like me to.
Does anyone need them to reread the case for us? This is the same one we heard last time. Is that accurate? Or have I just been to so many meetings on this?
No. Yeah, the last time we heard it was at the Planning Commission.
Yeah, Planning Commission, where we heard from--
Oh, that's right. Well, you were at Planning Commission meeting.
Maybe that's it.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it is.
Okay. Well, you probably should read it then.
Yeah, yeah. For the new mem-- or for the other members. So, yeah, as you mentioned, this is CAC 2022-2. It's an application to change zone district boundaries from MXD, which is planned mixed-use district, to I-1 light manufacturing district. In order to convert a vacant office building into a Class A storage facility filed by Whit Mitchell of Waypoint Investments for the property located at 801 Tom Martin Drive situated northeast corner, Section 33 Township, 18th South, Range 3 West. That's in Council District 7. As mentioned, you know, the use, proposed use is a Class A climate-controlled storage facility. The subject property sits on approximately 13.73 acres of land, which is currently zoned MXD. Abutting the subject property to the north is Southern Research Engineering or Southern Research Institute, zoned MXD. To the south of the site is Advanced Technology Recycling, zoned I-1. To the west is an office building, zoned MXD. And to the east is Avenues of Lake Shore, a large 525-unit apartment development, also zoned MXD. The current zoning MXD Commercial Use Group 2 allows the following uses. So that's the current zoning. And then the applicant is proposing to repurpose the existing 91,000-square-foot office building into climate-controlled storage. The site will also include 166 new fully enclosed storage units for boats and recreational vehicles, as well as a wash bay. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as light manufacturing. This district is designed to allow for light manufacturing office uses potentially in business park settings typically near major transportation routes, including interstate, state highway, railroad spur, airport facility. Use in the district include warehouse, distribution use, urban agriculture, supporting uses such as minor retail services to support the major uses. No residential uses are allowed in this district. The proposed zoning request is consistent with the long-range land use plan. Zoning ordinance, many, many storage warehouses permitted in I-1, subject to a few conditions. You know, those units are used for storage of property and no manufacturing or industrial activities occur. And then no storage of highly flammable or, I'm sorry, highly combustible, flammable or explosive products are allowed. The applicant's proposed site plan shows 49 parking spaces. The parking requirement for warehousing is one space per 2,000 square feet of gross floor area, plus one space per 400 square feet of office, for the office area. Therefore, total number of parking spaces required, 49. Applicant is proposing a site plan that shows a total of 49 spaces. Of course, you know, the item will have to comply with a landscaping ordinance within the zoning ordinance. And there were no comments from the stormwater department on this case. The neighborhood, Oxmore Neighborhood Association, met at its regular scheduled meeting, February 14, 2022, to review the proposed project and voted to not recommend the proposed rezoning request. The vote taken that night was 12 to approve the non-recommendation and 18-- I'm sorry. The vote was 12 to approve or recommend and 18 to not recommend. The property is located within the southwest framework plan area, but at this time, the framework plan was, let's say, was, let's say, I mean, but there's, currently, there's no IC committee active. Staff did recommend some Q conditions, and those are listed here. And these are listed all in the affirmative. And so these uses would be the only ones that would be allowed within the I-1 district if it were to be rezoned. And then the Planning Commission did meet at its regular scheduled meeting on April 6, 2022, reviews, reviewed the proposed project and voted to recommend the proposed rezoning request. And also, I would mention, I guess it's on here and I didn't say it, that there is a Q condition also, that this development would meet the requirements of the Oxmore Steering Committee guidelines for design of the building and the landscaping. And that concludes the report.
Okay, so that additional Q condition is number one--
That's correct.
--under the Qs?
Yes, ma'am. And then number two are all the uses that would be allowed if the property were rezoned.
So would the developers like to come and say anything else? Or do you feel that the written communication from the staff is sufficient?
It's a good question.
Well, if you're going to speak, you need to come speak in our rather insufficient microphone, so you have to get close to it. But it does move. I mean, you can--
I've also got some rendering--
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, I saw this at the Planning Commission, so I feel like we've already looked at it, but only one of us has. Yes, I can. Y'all?
My name's Whit Mitchell. This is Will Forbes. We're the owners of New Latitude Moving in Storage. We'll try to be brief. And Counselor Abbott, I apologize for the redundancy in getting to hear this all over again.
Oh, it's part of the job. I just, you know, sometimes if you hear things enough, you feel like you've already heard them, so.
So I guess initially I wanted to just discuss our history and why we feel like we're different than typical storage developers. Will and I started our business, our moving company, when we were in school at Auburn in 2011. We've been fortunate to have, to have grown and had the opportunity to purchase New Latitude Moving in Storage in 2017. At the same time we purchased New Latitude, we purchased an industrial building over in the Oxmore neighborhood. And about a year later, in 2018, we were already out of space, storage space for our customers. So really, since 2018, we've been looking for storage space. We were excited when we saw the, well, initially when the old IRS building came on the market, located at 801 Tom Martin Drive. We thought it would get scooped up quickly, and it sat on the market for a little over two years. And so we're excited about the opportunity to take it, repurpose it into a Class A storage facility that we'd be excited to bring our customers and give us our business the opportunity to grow. So, y'all have this packet?
We do.
Okay. I'm going to kind of page turn. The property's located west of I-65, south of Lake Shore, in the southeast corner of District 7. Our current facility is just a mile away from the property. The next page, we've shown the current entrance to the property from Tom Martin Road, and then a rendering of that, that, our proposed development, that entrance at Tom Martin The next page is the current entrance at Winona-Oxmore Road. The following page is our proposed development. Then we have a site plan. The, it should be noted that the existing Class A storage facility, no exterior modifications will be made, so the only changes will be made to the interior of the building, so it will maintain as a Class A building, just, just in alternate use. We feel like there are three main ways that it adds value to the neighborhood. The first is what we project to be approximately an 80% reduction in traffic. There are currently 476 passenger vehicle parking spaces at the, at the site, as, in its use as an office facility. After our development, there'll be 49 passenger vehicle parking spaces and 166 closed RV or boat storage spaces. That's less than half the current parking. In addition, those boat and RV users access their, their units infrequently, which we think will amount to roughly an 80% reduction in traffic. The second point, I think, is pretty straightforward. It repurposes a building that's been vacant for over a year, over two years, and stabilizes that property. We feel like it's just a matter of time before it begins to deteriorate. And then finally, because this will be the primary storage facility for our moving and storage operation, we're going to take pride in making sure that it's an attractive facility that we want to bring our customers to. We feel like it has merit for rezoning on a couple of grounds. The first is the city's long-range land use plan identifies the proposed use of the property as light manufacturing or I-1, which is congruent with our rezoning request. In addition, the neighboring, the neighboring properties are largely industrial and commercial users. In fact, the, this property is encapsulated by largely industrial and commercial users. The next point is that there's a definitive need for storage in the area. For lending purposes, we are required to get a third-party storage feasibility report. It's about a 70-page report, and this feasibility expert does nothing but run analysis on the market for self-storage. What she found was in a three-mile ring, those competitors were sitting at just under 97% occupied. A full storage facility would be just over 90% occupied, accounting for turnover of units moving in and out. So there's really no available storage right now in, in that area. And then in addition to that, the, our property will be the most convenient for Oxmore residents. And then, and then finally, the, the property has been vacant for over two years, and we, we fully understand, I mean, we're in the moving and storage business. It's not the most exciting or sleek business out there that, you know, people get fired up talking about. And the same goes for, for storage facilities. We realize that the storage moratorium in the city was, has been lifted. And, and we, we truly think that this is the highest and best use for this property. In fact, this property, before we put it under contract, went to a national auction through 10X. It's a platform that is a partner, is owned by LoopNet, if you're familiar with that, online listing service of, of commercial and industrial properties. So it went to an auction where there were thousands of viewers nationwide, and no transaction was consummated as a result of that auction. There were some community concerns that we wanted to address just briefly. There was concerns that our trucks would be parked on-site. That, that will not be the case. Our trucks will be parked at our primary office, 130 Industrial Drive, just up the road. There is concern that there would be a waste dumping station. That will not be the case. There will just be a wash bay at the facility. There'll be no on-site diesel tanks. The hours of operation will provide secure gated access from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and then the office will be open and staffed from 7:30 AM to 6:30 PM. Finally, this is kind of in line with the, the decrease in traffic. The same expert that performed the feasibility study estimated that there will be only four to five trucks or RVs that will visit the, the site per day, and these will be during non-peak hours. People are coming to, you know, pick up their boat or RV on the weekend. They're not coming, you know, 7:00 to 8:00 in the morning, you know, 5:00 to 6:00 PM in the afternoon. And finally, the, the property will be secured. It will be fully fenced, well-lit, monitored 24/7, and, and only accessible outside of office hours by paying customers. So in conclusion, we're, we're proud, we're thankful to be a part of the Oxmore community, and we hope to be there for years to come. We think that our third-party feasibility study demonstrates an absolute need in the market for storage. The long-range land use plan is congruent with our rezoning request. And in addition to the above points, we'll stabilize a vacant property, decrease traffic, and spend a significant amount of money on beautification of the, of the property. Following pages are some supporting documentation that show, that gives you kind of a visual of the industry neighbors, Evonik, the biomaterials production facility, to the, to the northwest, directly north is Southern Research, a pharmaceutical and biotechnical research facility. To the south, you've got a distribution center that's 300,000 square feet of industrial warehouse. Directly west is T-Mobile, a corporate call center. And then, as Tim mentioned, there's the avenues of Lake Shore that are east, and a convenience store that's east as well. And we've got a three-mile competitor map, in case you're interested in viewing that, and some photos of those competitor facilities, and, and some excerpts from this feasibility study. The first is a preliminary conclusion that states that the area can easily support the self-storage footage of the subject property in addition to 150,000 net rentable square feet before this subject market reaches equilibrium. So her point is that there's substantial need in this area and that the market can support not just this facility, but additional. And then the next page states what was mentioned previously, that, that the competitor facilities are sitting at just under 97% occupied. Finally, there's, there's about 12 images of the competitor facilities that I think demonstrate that our facility is, is not going to be a true competitor. Our facility truly will be in a separate class aesthetically, and we believe in the, in the way that we'll take care of customers because our moving operation will be attached to it. We appreciate your time in hearing our request.
Well, thank you. We, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public here to speak? Seeing no one, do members of the committee have questions that they would like to ask?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've noticed that you said something about RVs and boats, you know, being stored there, which is like a big concern. And I've been over in that area, and so how large, you know, would the boats be that would be stored in the RVs?
I think you'd be looking at no larger than, than a U-Haul, the largest U-Haul, and ranging down from, from there.
Yeah, that's, you know, and I, I know I heard you say that, you know, the owners couldn't come during, you know, peak hours. You said something about coming on Saturdays, which is, you know, when a lot of people are off work. And, you know, I'm just kind of thinking in my head, you know, how would that work, you know, with large RVs and boats, you know, being accessed and, you know, sharing, you know, the road? Doing, so what, what would be the times that, like, if an owner came, if I owned a boat or RV and I came, what would be the time that I would, you know, be able to access and, you know, move my, my vehicle or my boat out?
So from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, there'll be secure gated access, and then the facility will be staffed from, what was it? Seven--
Seven thirty AM to six thirty PM.
So during those, so 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, this is Monday through Friday, correct? Or Saturday?
Saturday as well.
So they'll be able to move their boats and their RVs out during that time?
Right. Behind gated access.
And so how, okay, behind gated access, and then travel, how would they maneuver their, you know, like, I know we're there, right there about a freeway, but how would they get from that point, if you're trying to go from, you know, the access to get back on the main road or go, you know, back out in that moving traffic?
Likely what they would do is they would exit on Winona. The gate, I think, will be recessed so that, you know, they're able to exit the gate and then, and then make a right turn or a left turn onto Winona. They'd also have the option to do that on, on Tom Martin Road as well.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, just concerned about, like, you know, I know boats and RVs are like, you know, big equipment, you know, like traffic, like holding up traffic or, you know, what have we. So that's just a concern that I have. Thank you, Counselor Abbott.
Thank you. Counselor Wood?
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Trying to get into this, I don't know, we have a hard time getting these agendas, and so I didn't get a chance to get into it ahead of time. But just looking at the property, it's a really nice property. Kind of just had some initial concerns around just highest and best use, kind of here, here has been empty a couple of years, but they have a ton of development happening in that area, and so I know we're limited on sites in general. And this is kind of something that happened on, in my district, on the Parkway, old HQ, which is like Home Depot, got converted to a storage unit, and we, we lose that site. And so that's a site we can't get back, and hurts us in, you know, things like attracting grocery stores and other things. But, and this site's a little bit different, but those are just kind of some initial concerns just because of, from not being able to get too deeply into this earlier. I would probably be more in line with sending this to the pool council with no recommendation. But we can kind of continue the conversation around it.
Okay, Madam President, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make? Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. The light is on, but I don't know, did you hear me? Thank you for allowing me just to walk in, and I was, was very interested in this particular piece of zoning, because this is in District 7, and I know that the, which I represent. And I know that the residents, I was looking at the vote, I do not talk with the neighborhood president, and looking at, there was a lot of discussion at that particular meeting where they made this vote. And I was there at the end to see what a lot of the discussion was. But I have a question, we just want to piggyback on Counselor Tate. I just wanted to know, one of the concerns that one of the neighbors expressed to me with the RV and the boat type of storage, would that be built around the Tom Martin entrance, or would that be around Winona-Oxmore Road? And are you going to enclose that in it? Or would that mean those vehicles would be sitting there as you pass by either of those roadways?
The, the buildings will be fully enclosed, so you won't be able to see--
Okay. That is your, what you're proposing?
Yes, ma'am. This is the rendering. RVs and boats would be enclosed in the structure.
Okay.
So you would--
The light was red. Okay. So, thank you very much. So that was just one of the concerns that I knew that they had about what that would look like, what the frontage would look like. And I, I know I want to respect Counselor Wood's question about, of course, this is a building that, you know, with the IRS building, was a very purposeful building. It had a lot of value. And of course, now that it's been sitting dormant or sitting not open, trying to find a way to repurpose that. I know neighbors had thought they could do something. I think it was a little ambitious talking about a rec center and other things in there. But just, I wanted to be sure it stayed true to some of the things we've done in the past with the moratorium of how the frontage looked, how it matches the neighborhood. Of course, we have the, the Oxmore Steering Committee. They worked very well in being sure things look right or fit the rest of the neighborhood. But I did want to be fair to the residents and some of the concerns they had, and I think what finished how their vote turned out for this particular property. But just keeping it in line, as you talked about, the other businesses that are back there, Southern Research, you know, we have all of these other, what do you call those? Biomedical-type buildings? So we didn't want to lose that look of it's another building or company that would be in there. So I do like seeing the aesthetics there. But that was a valid question, maybe not even a question, but a comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, too.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Tate?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm looking at the proposed, the entry. So this is in, in conjunction with the Oxmore framework, as Madam President was talking about, is this something that you guys have to go back and, like, redo? So this is the current, like, this is your proposed frontage, right? That's, that, that one over there or that one? That one right there. That's your entrance, correct?
On Tom Martin.
This is the entrance off of Tom Martin.
Okay. So it's in, it's in conjunction with the Oxmore framework?
Oxmore Steering Committee.
The Oxmore Steering Committee, okay. Oxmore Steering Committee, okay. Thank you.
The facade of the building is going to be a material, it's like a stucco-coated, flat panel, high-quality material that's mixed with, mixed with brick. So that's one of the challenges that we're going to have to make sure that we succeed in, is that it, that it fits the current design and the Class A feel that the, that the property already has, and, and we're dedicated to making sure that that happens. And, you know, I, in my opinion, we'd like to invest a significant amount of money in, in greenery to, to cover, you know, as much of the frontage as possible. And we believe, we, we think that we'll be able to add aesthetic qualities to, to that street and to the neighborhood.
Any other questions?
There was one other concern, and I apologize for coming in late during your presentation, the traffic study. Was there a traffic study that's proposed with this? Are you using information that had been gathered before? I know that with the growth and the development that is occurring around that area, there is significant concern about any traffic off of Lake Shore Parkway that would feed into the Tom Martin and the Winona-Oxmore inlets.
I, I believe city staff sent the proposed development over to BDOT, and I think it was just inherent that the conversion to a storage facility, traffic, so there was no traffic study required by BDOT.
Because I guess in essence what you're saying now, the decrease would be you don't have workers in the building as you did before, and now it would be when you're coming in and out for the, to put your storage in or out. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I have a few questions. You're going from 476 parking spaces and presumably those used to be employees, down to 49. And did I hear you say that you're expecting five or six renters to come a day to pick up, drop off?
Five or six larger vehicles entering and exiting. There could be, there could be more smaller vehicle traffic, but four to five trucks per day. I think we'd like two RVs coming to drop off, and then maybe three--
Well, I'd like to get all the RVs out of my neighborhood, so, and a boat, so. But, so, so that is a significant reduction in the traffic. See, I thought that I, and I think I did hear some of the residents at the Planning Commission meeting talking about an increase in traffic, but this will be a vast decrease in traffic, because most people who own those things do not come and get them very often. You know, in the summer, I'm sure the boats go out and probably stay at the lake until winter comes, and then they come back. Okay, and, but this isn't just for RVs and boats. Can't normal people come and bring all the extra contents of their homes?
Correct.
Because we all have too much stuff. Okay, so, because the picture, the picture with all the green on it, that, that, well, it's that one right there. Okay, it looks like you have about, what, two different, two or three different sizes of unit outdoor, you know, where the parking used to be.
That's right. So I think to address your question about the items, this A right here, the existing building, climate-controlled, sizes, a lot of different sizes, but something very five by five up to like a size unit, is it?
Okay, and on that same picture, right up at the corner of the existing building, there's a rectangle with a B on it?
That's right.
What is the B?
That's an existing mechanical building.
Oh, okay. I just wondered. I thought that lone storage unit out there all by itself-- I just wondered, I thought that lone storage unit out there all by itself, but it...
It isn't a closed mechanical...
It didn't say it was a dumpster, so.
Right.
Okay, and all of the par, all 49 of the parking spaces for people coming to check on their stuff are, are right around the perimeter of the building?
That's, that's...
Okay. And I think that y'all told us, the side that has the railroad track on it?
Down, down here?
Yeah, is, that's the side that drops off?
No, the side that drops off is over here. From this corner back, of course, there's a railroad track, this side over here, this flatter, this from this right here on Tom Martin, around the property boundary, this drops off. So if you were to walk straight off the back of this parking lot, right here on the west side, you wouldn't want to do that. You wouldn't want to do that, you'd drop straight off.
Okay, and the closest residential is across the railroad tracks?
Closest residential, so, uh, Tower Development is currently building on this spot of Tom Martin.
Okay, and he came and spoke in favor of your...
That's correct.
Price High Tower?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so there's a boundary with that drop off between the residential development.
Okay, well, I was looking at, these people, let me see, you don't have this drawing. These people are here, yeah, and they're across the railroad tracks, right?
That's correct. And also across, there's a road on this outside railroad tracks. That's Shane in Oxmore.
Shane in Oxmore. Oh, okay, I see it now. Okay, and there was one more question that has slipped my mind, so I may have to save it for the council meeting. Because I just can't think of it. So um, any other questions before we make some kind of decision? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Uh, I'll offer a motion to move this to full council with no recommendation.
Okay, it has been, and do we have a reason for that? Are we, are we supposed to state a reason or is that just...
Yeah, I'll throw, I'll give, basically um, when you have this type of, I guess, the not adverse reaction from the residents behind, uh, not wanting something to happen, we'd just like to be able to hear from them. And because we, we didn't get the agenda ahead of time, just didn't have a ti, have a chance to reach out and to um, get any kind of feedback, so uh, to avoid denying or delaying you guys any further would keep you, keep you on track to go to full council and that's the vote that matters, so.
Okay, so we have a motion that has been properly seconded. Are there any more questions or comments?
Am I allowed to ask a question? I know I'm not on the committee, but can I ask a question?
Yes, we're, this is a combination committee of the whole, so you can say anything you want.
Thank you. I just want to ask, when would this move to the full council so that if, uh, we could allow that discussion by the neighborhood? When is, is it coming up for the next?
Yeah, we would set, um, we would submit an item next Wednesday, a week from today. Uh, let's see, let me try and, uh, was that the 26th? Yeah, we would set a public hearing on the 26th for four weeks into the future.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so there's plenty of time for everybody to familiarize themselves, go visit the property. Um, okay, so we have a motion that has been seconded, are we ready to vote? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and all, well, there aren't any other people, so um, so we'll send it to the full council and we'll hear from you again.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next item is way on the back page, the Southern Area Framework Plan Update.
Man, thank you so much. Good afternoon, councilors. My name is Thomas Yule. I serve as senior planner in the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits. I'm excited to be in front of you today to present an update to the Southern Area Framework Plan. Next slide, please. As with all our framework plans, this is a collaborative effort between the City of Birmingham and uh, the Regional Planning Commission. Uh, myself and Ms. Maria Hines from Regional Planning Commission serve as the, um, as the project managers for this plan and as always, we're thankful to Regional Planning Commission for their collaborative help with this plan. Next slide, please. Uh, so just as a little bit of background, the comprehensive plan was the city's first um, large citywide plan, uh, first comprehensive plan since, uh, I believe the 1950s, so it's a very overdue plan that allowed the city to fully understand and to plan for, you know, larger, broad scale, citywide uh, development and initiatives. In that plan, there was um, an understanding that citywide plans don't necessarily take into account specific um, needs of certain communities. And because of that, there was a recommendation in that plan to divide the city into nine framework plan areas and create framework plans for each of those areas that were tailored to and specific to those communities. And so after 2013, when the comprehensive plan was adopted, the planning department began writing and presenting those plans to city council for endorsement. And we are now on the ninth and final um, framework plan, the Southern Area Framework Plan. Next slide, please. Uh, as I said, this is the ninth final framework plan. The Southern Area is comprised of the Crestline, no, this is a little small, I apologize, uh, the Crestline, Crestwood, and Red Mountain communities. Uh, next slide, please. So the plan essentially asks three major questions and tries to answer them. First, um, what is the current state of the, I'm sorry, I'm gonna pull this up so I can actually see this. I apologize. Uh, what is the current state of the Southern Area? What are the existing conditions essentially related to land use, transportation, crime, park infrastructure, social um, conditions within the neighborhoods of the framework plan? And so we do that, we try to answer that question, what is the current state through a variety of methods, data collection, market analysis, understanding of, you know, the bus routes, the bike routes, vehicle traffic within the study area. And then we ask, what are the issues facing the communities within the, the framework plan area? Uh, and we, we answer this question, what are those issues, by asking the residents directly. We have a survey, online survey that we provided. We got close to, I believe, 200 responses to that survey. We created a map that residents could go online and draw on the map and say, right here is where I feel scared when I will cross the street, or right here is a park that I love. And so really beneficial way for us to understand the, the issues and the concerns and the things that residents like about their community. And then finally, um, we ask, um, what will the framework plan, how will the framework plan achieve that vision for the future? How will it address those issues that residents have? And so we do this by, again, uh, partly asking residents, what, what do you think? Like, how would you like to address this? You know, you don't love this park, what are the things that you would like to see in this park that would help it more address the needs of you and your neighbors? And also, of course, we provide, you know, our professional opinion and professional uh, efforts when trying to answer that question, what to do to address these issues of these residents. Next slide, please. The plan has seven chapters and I'm gonna focus on five of those chapters. Um, uh, and if you have any questions about anything that I'm about to go over, uh, feel free to either stop me or wait till the end, I'm happy to do either way. Um, and if you have any questions that I'm unable to answer today, um, I'm of course happy to find that answer and relay it to you. Uh, next slide, please. First chapter I'll go over is Community Renewal. This is a broad, kinda esoteric chapter, but it's generally about community feel, uh, sense of community. Uh, it relates to safety, to general, you know, contentment with your neighborhood and your community, uh, whether you feel you have a, you live in a cohesive community, what, essentially all those things that go towards making a community, a community you can be proud in. Uh, there are four goals of this chapter and I'm gonna read each one specifically because I think it's important to hit on these specifically. First goal of the Community Renewal Chapter, ensure the safety and beauty of the community. Goal two, ensure the physical well-being of the residents. Goal three, provide high-quality housing options for a variety of incomes and household sizes. And goal four, identify and reduce blight. And it's a broad chapter, but it's all kinda wrapped up in community feel, community cohesion, and sense of place and contentment with your community. Uh, next slide, please. Next chapter I'll go over, Green Systems. Essentially is related to two things, park and rec and stormwater and watershed management and flood mitigation. The two specific goals of this chapter are to, one, ensure that parks are adequately funded, maintained, and accessible to all residents. Goal two, improve the ecological health of the Southern Area's natural systems through enhanced stormwater management and flood mitigation techniques. Next slide, please. Next slide is Economic Vitality. In our initial data gathering efforts, we do essentially a, a market analysis to help better understand the current existing conditions related to economic opportunity and we try to study, you know, what are barriers and what things can we do to help unlock potential in the Southern Area. There are five goals of this, uh, in, in this chapter. Goal one, create and maintain an award-winning educational system, both in pre-K and K through 12 systems and higher education. Goal two, support entrepreneurs, startups, and small businesses. Goal three, government policies, programs, and processes related to business are efficient, fair, and transparent. Goal four, support an economy with viable commercial, mixed-use, research, and retail development. And goal five, utilize catalyst sites. Catalyst sites, I'll, I'll dive into that one a little bit more, it may bear a little more explanation. Sites where, you know, maybe there is a, a pocket of, of buildings within Southern Area that aren't, we mentioned highest and best use just a few minutes ago, maybe they aren't at their highest and best use and maybe there's one building in that pocket of buildings that is holding, you look at it negatively and say it's holding them back or you look at it positively and say, if we were to help this site develop, it would unlock potential for all the adjacent buildings. It's, you know, what's, it's the key to making this whole area, um, you know, you, you fix this up and all of a sudden the guy down the street opens a business next door, the other person that was already there decides to fix their facade, it, it's a catalytic effect and it kinda, it kinda snowballs into a positive benefit for that area. Next slide, please. Next chapter I'll go over, Transportation and Infrastructure. This is um, essentially two major components to this, safety and multimodality, making our transportation systems safer and making sure residents have a variety of options besides single occupancy vehicles, besides cars, when they want to get around. The two specific goals of this chapter, one, to provide a wide range of transportation choices for all users. Goal two, to provide a safe transportation network in a state of good repair. And, next slide, please. The last chapter I'll touch on is Future Land Use. In the original 2013 Comprehensive Plan, the city updated citywide um, land use and um, land use is essentially, as you likely know, different from zoning. Zoning says, I legally can or cannot do this at this site. Future land use is, this is what the city, community, council, everyone wants, thinks is appropriate in the future uh, for, for a particular site. And so as we do these framework plans, we update that future land use. Um, we, we take an inventory of the existing land use, we look at zoning, we take community input into account, stakeholder input into account, and say, this is what as a city we think makes sense um, moving forward in the future, highest and best use for these, these parcels. Um, there are four goals of this chapter. One, preserve existing single-family districts from unnecessary encroachment by multifamily or other non-residential uses. Two, introduce the concepts of mixed-use districts as desirable transition areas between residential and commercial districts. Three, regulate the form and location of catalytic sites through the inclusion of form-based zoning. And four, allow for flexibility and permissible housing types as a means to increase the supply of affordable housing options. Next slide, please. So for next steps, um, we are still, this is not indoor, uh, adopted by count, by um, the Planning Commission or endorsed by council yet, so we are still very much in a incorporating community input phase. We are still happily accepting community input and suggestions and it's absolutely not too late to still incorporate those into this plan. Um, so our next step is to just continue incorporating community input. Step after that, public meetings, um, we will have essentially, we're planning to have a final kind of plan unveiling meeting for this plan. In addition, we'll be having a series of other meetings related to rezoning, which I'll mention in a minute. Next, our next step would be to present this to our Planning Commission for adoption and present to city council for endorsement, which is, it's, that's a, uh, important point that our Planning Commission adopts the plan while our city council endorses it. And then finally, kind of behind the scenes in all this, we are working on community rezoning. As you may know, we have, we're in between two zoning clash, classification systems. We have an old one and we have a new one. And as we do our framework plans, we make recommendations to city council on how to update the zoning for that area to the new zoning classification system. So we are currently working on recommendations for rezoning for the entire Southern Area and we will be doing public meetings regarding that and presenting that to you, your, this body, as well as the full council, of course, um, once that, once we're um, complete with that effort. Next slide, please. Finally, I will just plug ImagineBHAM.com. This is the website that you can find all of our framework plans, not just the Southern Area, but the ones, all eight others, including the ones that affect um, District 1 and District 9. Uh, and it's a, uh, I would say a wonderful website, I think fairly intuitive to go on and find these plans and see specific recommendations that city council has endorsed for your communities, your neighborhoods. So um, with that, I will entertain any questions. I want to thank you very much for allowing me to come present this update today. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Too many questions.
Well, yeah, not, well, like I said, I think y'all are, appreciate the update, as far as where y'all are in the process. Did want to ask, what kind of feedback, that's the first time I've heard that you had the tool to allow people to kinda go online, look at a map, and kinda make comments on different areas, that sounds like a pretty impactful tool. I wanted to know what kind of participation or use do you get out of that?
Absolutely. So we didn't get quite as much participation as we did with the written and multiple-choice survey that we provided. I believe we got, I'd be happy to get specific numbers for you, I believe it was close to 100 responses. I don't know if those were 100 different users or 100 different suggestions from what, I assume it's not from all, from one user. You never know that. But I, in my opinion, we had very good engagement with that tool. That was through, I believe, Wiki Maps.
Okay. I was gonna ask if that was a GIS tie-in, or?
It would possibly be possible to do it with GIS. The Regional Planning Commission, the other project managers set it up using Wiki Maps, and it was a fairly intuitive and very beneficial tool.
All right, thank you.
Any questions? Well, I would recommend go at the Imagine Birmingham, I mean, you could spend hours there, but you can spend just a little time there to familiarize yourself, because when we first started the framework plans, we were having public meetings and, plus the online, and with the pandemic, it seems like everything just changed. So, but that's just in the last two years. So this is the ninth and final plan, so the other eight are all totally complete? Or is the North Side, South Side one still in some kind of limbo from the pandemic?
I would defer to Chief Planner, Tim Girmel.
Yeah, I mean, you're basically right, yeah, it kinda got caught right in the middle there. And so we did, you know, present the final plan to the communities in both cases, and we had actually, you know, started the process of reviewing rezoning plans. So we presented the plan, we presented the future land use, and in a separate meeting, we presented to each community the proposed rezoning plan. And then, and kind of, I think we presented those rezoning plans a year ago in January. And so, you know, of course, the pandemic, of course, started raging again, and we sort of backed off from public meetings, and we're at the point now where we really need to go back and do that, you know, reinitiate that process. And so North Side, South Side in particular, you know, we need to schedule meetings with each community president, and basically go back to that document. I know we received comments, particularly on the South, the Southern community, or South Side community, and we reacted to that with our mapping, and so we need to present those changes, and then, you know, get more feedback, you know, and I, whenever we do those things, I always, you know, introduce it as a conversation, you know, so it's kind of a back and forth. You know, we're presenting something that we believe, you know, is a good plan, but at the same time, we recognize the community, you know, has a voice, and a very important one, and so, you know, we often, you know, make changes, you know, based on their suggestion, because they have good suggestions. And so, the point being that it's still a conversation, and we still need to have some back and forth, and kinda develop some consensus, you know, before we go forward, you know, to adoption. And so, you know, that might take another meeting, it might take two or three meetings, or four meetings.
Well, that was what I wanted to ask for, you know, I've heard some talk about, from residents, that the pandemic just sort of made them, like, forget everything, and they can't even remember what was in the plan now.
Yeah.
I guess if they go to the website, they can be refreshed, but, you know, a lot, a lot of time has gone by, and I'm not sure whether it was the South Side, North Side that got canceled, it was supposed to be at some brewery?
Yeah, that was actually Southern Area. We were attempting to do the final review of the Southern Area plan, and, yeah, there was an issue, traffic issue, that happened, and we ended up canceling at that time.
Well, there was also a coronavirus issue.
Well, I think that, at that case, at that particular time, it was a traffic incident that happened right in front of the meeting venue, and so, but we're ready to go back and do that. We wanted to make a presentation to this body first, you know, kind of a preview to that meeting, and so, you know, that's kinda where we're at. You know, we make this presentation here, hope to have a community-wide meeting to kinda reveal the plan, talk, you know, reveal the land use plan, and hopefully at that time, we'll have a preview of the rezoning plan, not with the intent of really diving too deep into that part of it, but the intent to invite people to participate in a future meeting where we can focus solely on zoning. You know, zoning often is, you know, kinda challenging, and really detailed, and a little technical, and so it requires more focus. And so we always want to have those meetings as, you know, a sole meeting, just to focus on zoning. And usually what we do is we introduce it, you know, receive comment, questions, you know, with the understanding that we're gonna have to come back at least one more time, maybe multiple times. And then it's, it's happened in different ways, you know, different communities, where we present, you know, receive comment and question, come back a second time, and we may get a vote the second time, you know, but we may not. You know, sometimes it takes two, or three, or four meetings, you know, to settle and then develop that consensus, you know? And so, that's kinda how we want to move forward.
Okay, so how many of the framework plans are completely finished?
Completely adopted, and the zoning adopted, I believe, let's see, let me go through. So, Tittusville, North Birmingham, the Western Area, of course, Western Area is Smithfield, West End, and Five Points West. The Northeast, Southwest, and Pratt-Enslie, I believe the plan was adopted, is that right? Yeah, the plan's adopted, and we're just ready to go forward with the zoning on that one, and we're waiting on to adopt the character code before we adopt, you know, attempt to endorse it and get the rezoning approved. We have character districts that we wanted to put in place there through the form-based code, and we'll be, hopefully, we'll be adopting character code or our form-based code in September of this year. And so when we do that, we'll be able to adopt the Enslie-Pratt rezoning. So we're a little over halfway with all the communities, so we've rezoned over half of the communities in the city. And when we're remaining, you know, Enslie-Pratt adoption of the zoning, North Side, South Side, and Southern Area. Oh, I'm sorry, and I forgot about the Eastern, Eastern communities. So, that one is in limbo too, where we've had difficulties finalizing the rezoning plans with the communities. Now we have two of the communities that have voted to approve it, and one hasn't even met on it, and then one that is ready to vote. I think Eastlake would be happy to vote on it. The Eastern Birmingham area, we still need to meet with that community to kind of develop some consensus on the rezoning plan. So we've got a little bit of work out of us, you know, so, yeah, we've got a lot of work to do to kind of finalize those rezoning plans, and then to move forward to adoption. Yeah, so it's gonna be a busy next year or two. Hopefully, we can get all that done, you know, in the next, say, 18 months. I think it's possible, you know, to do that, it's just gonna require a lot of meeting and a lot of consensus building.
Yeah, well, I would think that it's safe to say that the newest members of the council probably need a personal meeting to bring them up to speed, because, you know, I've been here for everything. But, you know, there are lots of people, if you, when you just come in the door, you can barely find the door. You know, there's just so much.
Sure.
And so I think each, well, each new councilman, maybe some of the medium councilmen who've been here a term or two, you know, I've been here 20 years, and I learn something new every single day. There's something new about City Hall, how things work, what we're doing, there's something new every day. But I think that these planning issues, because, you know, they come up and bite you, or you don't want to be bitten if you haven't really paid attention.
Yeah.
And I know from having been a council member, we get hit with so much stuff.
Yeah.
You know, people are trying to sell us everything.
Yeah.
You know, give money to my group, you know, we just, we just are in a day, and then, you know, there's one guy that wants to sell me some brick, and I don't really understand why they think a council member needs to buy any brick. But, anyway, so I think that the new council members are maybe just poll everybody and see if they would like a one-on-one, just to talk about what we're doing.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, if that's the desire, you know, they just, you know, if they would go through GA, Government Affairs, you know, make a request, and then we'd kinda, you know, work through them, you know, we'd be happy to, you know, follow their guidance.
I'll poll the other members of the council and just find out if they have an interest, 'cause I don't want to request something that people don't want.
Sure.
But I think it's important from a planning standpoint, you know, you're gonna be faced with thorny planning issues, you want to know how we got here, and see if you see the landmines that might be in the, in the plan that you, maybe you see them right off because you haven't been here. You know, sometimes not being here is good.
Yeah.
Fresh eyes. So, but Mr. Ull, we appreciate your presentation.
Absolutely, thank you.
You made it concise enough, but you've given us enough information to know what we don't know, and so we can, you know, start digging.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. And these additional meetings for the neighborhood people, you know, I really think that the ones that aren't finished, you know, we might need to have, like, one more of those meetings where you put the little stickers all over everything, and let people be brought back up to speed, reminded, reenthused, whatever, so that, so that, you know, I mean, after all this time has passed, there are new residents in every neighborhood that don't have a clue.
Yeah.
They don't even know there's a neighborhood association sometimes, so, so I think that getting, you know, for the ones that haven't been finished, you know, maybe having one more meeting, you know, we can have it at a city facility where we don't have to pay any money and everything, I realize we still have to have
Sure.
workers, you know,
Yeah.
who come, but, but I think that people need to sort of be reminded
Yeah.
that we have these things going, and that they're important.
Yeah.
It disturbs me, like, in this case we just finished hearing, that the, the committee has sort of languished, the Southwest Framework Plan Implementation Committee has just kind of gone away.
Yeah.
Well, we need to get people's enthusiasm up, and have them, you know, make sure people realize how important it is
Yeah.
before some developer wants to come and put a 20-story building next to your two-story frame house.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Yeah, we have a strategy to try and reinvigorate the implementation committees. You know, there have been several that have been pretty successful, and so, you know, I think it'd be great to have them kinda help us tell the story a little bit, you know, like, here's a success story, you know, kinda do a little roadshow, you know, where you've got this group that's been successful, and they can go and tell their story, you know, how did they get where they're at, you know, and sort of create some, you know, excitement that way. And we also recognize that, you know, certain, you know, framework plan areas, in particular the Southwest, you know, it's made up of, you know, like Roosevelt City, and Oxmore, and I forget the other community, but there's very different issues even within that one framework plan area. And so, I think we recognize that we probably would want to do, you know, something similar that we did in Five Points West, where, you know, Five Points West, Bush Hills neighborhood, had an action plan done specifically for their neighborhood, and I think, you know, the intent is to do something similar in Oxmore, you know, to kind of, to look at some particular issues they have that may be different, you know, from some of the other parts of the community. So, it's an ongoing effort.
Okay, well, I know we've sort of gone over a little bit,
Yeah.
but is there any old and new business anybody wants to?
I'll be here in a chair, you know, like, 'cause I mean, I see Thomas tomorrow in Enslie, so, you know, like you said, being, being up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I see Thomas tomorrow, I'll be bothering and weeding tomorrow, but I
Yes, ma'am.
something I was gonna make there, but I would do like to, like you said, you know, to be up there, you know, playing the game, you know.
Absolutely.
And try to see what I can do as a councilman, and my staff can give the word, I was like, yes, I
Ever said, it's, you know, new residents, new people, and they don't know, and so I just think that we need to give them, you know, their fair opportunity to participate, you know, in the framework plan.
Absolutely. We've been very grateful for your and your staff's presence at the Pratt-Enslie Implementation Committee.
Thank you.
Well, the, being a new councilman's like drinking from a fire hose. You have to be really careful, and, you know, you might fill up really fast, but you don't, you can't get discouraged. And planning is the key to everything. So, thank you. So we are ready to adjourn if someone wants to make that motion.
Real quick, do want to, and I guess, new business, or old business, you pick, but wish Councilor Latonya Tate a happy birthday, so.
Oh, well, happy birthday.
You can decide if it's new business or old business.
Is today it?
Yes, today is my birthday.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask you which anniversary of your 29th birthday you're celebrating, but, um, happy birthday.
Yeah, thank you.
So you have to sit and think about that one a while.
Thank you, I'm a chair, and I have someone, and Tim, and the team, and all of them. Thank you all so much.
Boom. Working on your birthday, all right. Motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Has been motioned, moved, and properly said, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we are adjourned.